Thank you for coming. I'm having a little trouble projecting, so I'll use the microphone. If you cannot hear, raise your hand. That will be a symbol for us that you can't hear very well in the back. We like to open our commission meetings with an invocation. And before I do that, I just would like for you all to remember Mr. John McFarland. Some of you know Mr. John as Mr. John. He was our security slash bailiff downstairs in the courthouse. And his last day of work was last Friday, and he passed away on Saturday. So I would like, if you would, please, just remember his family in your prayers. Can we pray? Dear Lord, we know who you are, and we know the powers that you have. We're thankful for everything that you have given us. We're thankful for the blessings to come. And Lord, we pray for Mr. McFarland's family. We pray that you will provide them with your grace and the comfort that they need during this difficult time. And Lord, help the commissioners of Harris County to make the best and the right decisions for the greater good of everyone in Harris County. All these things, Lord, we ask in your name. Amen. After the pledge of allegiance and to lead us, Sergeant Major Retired Jim Furin, Army Sergeant Major Retired Jim Furin, one of our distinguished, many distinguished veteran residents, will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Ms. Cameron Langson. Everybody, please stand, place your hand over your heart for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first item on our agenda tonight is the Minutes for the Reading Session of January the 2nd, the 19th. Is there a motion?
Somebody?
And we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor? Excuse me, is there any discussion? Sorry. No, it's a debate. All in favor? Is there appearance of citizens? Under our own business section tonight is the sign ordinance. The second reading of the sign ordinance was had, the second reading public hearing was held on December the 4th, 2018. And I actually titled this until this meeting so that our new commissioners will have a chance to look at it. So this discussion tonight is among the four commissioners. If anyone has any questions or any discussions, any changes. There's only one thing that was brought to my attention that, I don't know, it's on page nine. And it's under 2.7.5, Holiday Declarations. It says, "Holiday declarations and displays erected on a seasonal basis that are not intended to be permanent nature and displayed for no longer than 45 days." I am not certain that I particularly like to tell people how a landlord can keep their holiday declarations up. Just want them to know if anybody has any feeling on that.
I assume we're talking about holiday declarations that would be visible outside their building or their home?
Yes.
Visible from a roadway or adjacent property?
That was basically the only thing that I saw. That's it. And that is, I mean, that is an enforcement, an enforcement issue. Well, I just, I, you know, you want to extend the days or just take it out altogether? I would like to take it out altogether, but that's, you know, the pleasure distribution.
Well, I think we probably need to leave it because I don't think you're going to have that, you know, that much is coming, is going to be coming down. Most of this is, I would say most of, a lot of cities and counties in the state of Georgia had to rewrite their sign ordinance because of some litigation and because of the Supreme Court case in Reed versus Town and Gilbert from out in Arizona, which really dealt with content-type signs. And, you know, putting up the signs saying, well, you can only advertise this church service. You can only have it up for 12 hours, but yet you can have this other sign up advertising the gas station, you know, for permanent. And that's what the court tried to get away from was, and said we had to stay away from, is content control. And so, and if you notice, most of your ordinance deals with the fiscal characteristics and, you know, and the location and that type of thing. But I think with holiday, it applies to everybody. And so it could, it could apply to, you know, 4th of July would be a holiday. You know, they can stay up here that period of time. So I don't think it's going to be an issue. You can always, we can always come back and take it out if you need to.
I would defer to your
Yeah, I would recommend, you know, we go with the way it was drafted. And this, this ordinance is consulted with one of the gurus of amongst the sitting county attorneys that have a great deal of experience writing these signs and litigating these signs. And it's not, not something that's easy, but you have to get away from content-based signs.
No wonder.
I have one on 2.8.12 interstate highway. There's no sign should be erected that a bus are visible from interstate highway 85 or 185 right away in the county. Are we talking about just the right of the road? Or are we talking about if somebody has property and they want to erect a sign up that's not on the right of way, they can put a sign up?
Yeah.
Depending on what that sign would be, that, I mean, what if it's an offensive sign? I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm just
Yeah, then we got some there. But if it's, if it's a sign advertising, you know
A restaurant or something?
Yeah, you know, a church or some sort of business, then, you know, then you're looking at content-based.
Okay.
Well, and it's, it is a designated scenic route which prohibits billboards.
Right.
We already have that part.
Right.
And it exists in ordinance that has to be changed with this. Okay, so any other comments? And I'll call for a motion. No motion?
I'd like to have your approval.
Okay, we have a motion for closing.
I'll second it.
All in favor? The next on our agenda is the performance of reappointments to various boards. We're still trying to fill positions on, many of our boards must have been filled, but there are still a few. Is there anybody that has, anybody that has any?
I have one for the Development Department, Department, Development Authorities, excuse me, position for District Four. Mr. Ben Williams, who had that moved out of the county. I have in your resume, it was in your packet, to appoint Mike Stewart to that position. Mike has got a fairly extensive background as county governments and ACCG and Carvis and Institute of Government, as well as a number of military defense assignments, very well qualified. He's a resident of Harris County, and I make the motion that he be appointed to that position.
And I want to say that my recommendation is to the Red Board. I have been the Board of Commissioners liaison for eight years, and I want to resign from that position. And I would like to recommend that Commissioner Grant be appointed to that position.
For the Development Authority for District One, I'd like to appoint Gene Welton to that position. He's a lifelong county resident, entrepreneur, special commercial construction. I'd be glad to provide a resume for him.
Who was the last name?
Welton.
What's the position on Jones? Okay, if you could just send us a resume. All right, so we're going to make this all in one motion?
I will.
All right, we have, we have a motion for one more. We need a second. We have a second. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Melody Lakes Dam options. This project's been discussed 18 months or longer at a great many of our commission meetings. The project is containing the approved budget for a total of $425,000. That's this year's budget. EPD has weighed on our response as to what we plan to do. There have been numerous, numerous studies, numerous, numerous questions. I think most of those have been answered. The project will span two fiscal years. And any, any amount over the $425,000 budgeted in this year can be budgeted next year. There are seven options, actually 7.4 options, if you want to get specific, that have been given to the board. And Brian Kimsey and Matt Smith are here to answer any questions that we might have on the board. Thank you. So is there any discussion, any other questions?
I've got a question. Briefly touch bases with you today about this, but right now, I feel like one, the main issue is broadest at this point is being in category one. In the future, if we can get out of category one, I feel like that would benefit the county. We'd have fewer regulations from the state in the future. In order to get out of that county in category one, could you kind of explain to us what would have to be done?
Sure. Currently, based on the Merx Act of the Land, I assume everybody has seen the Merx Act. The fund was completed last year, April of last year. We identified 22 hazards. Now, those hazards, it's a broad scope breach analysis, so you'll do topographic survey. You don't take finished violations of houses. So they're, we're using our best guess from GIS mapping to get this bridge zone. So of those 23 hazards, the majority of them fall around Ski Lake. And so what happens is, St. Dam looks at it like a sunny day breach, the dam just disappears and goes away. Really quick wave of water that hits Ski Lake. And then if it overtops Ski Lake, they require us to breach Ski Lake also. So both dams are breached for that, for that VAP. In order to get this removed from category one to category two, the dam had to be lowered and a breach study performed, an actual breach analysis with downstream cross-section survey, finished violations identified, and the model, and a lot more detail on what's in the VAP, to determine that there are no hazards that could be inundated during that breach. So from a, what would happen to actual Melody Lake or the dam, it would be lowered to some level, whatever that level is. It could be five feet, it could be eight feet, you know, if we don't know what that would be. It would require some type of principal spillway, siphon system, some cheaper alternative insulation for primary spillway. And then the road could still be installed. It would just dip down and come back up. But that's really what would happen in order to get this to category two standing. It has to be, it has to be lowered to a point where there's, there's no hazard there, sir.
So if we were to lower that dam, lower the water level, would it possibly avoid these more expensive options and do a cheaper, like a siphon system, and not have to have like a concrete spillway? You could basically run that water through your siphon system, PVC pipe or some type of pipe, all the way down to the, to the next lake?
That's correct. The reason, this was discussed very early on about doing this method. And many clients will decide, you know, it may cost $20,000, $30,000 to do this study. How you do surveys and do full breach. And then it may not work, so you kind of you have a potential to lose that, that money. That's, that's what you're, you know, what you're looking at.
What does that do to the lake?
It lowers the pool, it decreases the size. So from a 16-acre lake, it may be a 10-acre lake or a, you know, somewhere in between. It's just, it decreases the pool size. So the dam lowers and the pool size decreases.
Would you, and this might be too hard to answer at the moment, but in order to put in a siphon system, do you have any idea what that might possibly cost?
Let's assume, and I'm just assuming, let's assume we're lowering this thing five to seven feet for the dam. It would more than likely take one to 12-inch PVC siphons. And then reinstall on the road on top of, you're probably looking at $100,000 to $150,000 total construction cost. Now, this, that's a ballpark guess. That's just a guess.
So with the survey, ballpark guess, $180,000 to $200,000?
Somewhere around that cost.
So if that worked out, would we still be close to our, to our cheaper options if the
The advantage of it is that it removes it from category one. You don't have to do that sweep. That's the advantage.
We wouldn't have to do, keep the records. It would have to be inserted.
No inspection, no, from a state's perspective, no inspection. You know, true for one of the cheaper options, two, taking it back to getting rid of the road, taking it back to a breach or give it to that category one, that's the only option. That's right. Two of the options, five and six. Five was lower, lower to where it was just a stream. And then the other, six was breaching, I believe. That's a lot of numbers. Yeah, six was breaching. So both of those did the same thing.
In the past, have you ever had to do any of those surveys to get out of category one? Do you, what percentage of those actually might go through that we can get out of that category one?
Last year, we had three. This year, we're working on
Three that were successful?
Successful.
Out of?
Seven, maybe. It's okay to percentage, you know. This year, we have three or four that we think will make it again.
What if it fails?
What if it doesn't make, what if it doesn't meet? It means you got to do the full upriver.
Then you got to go back to what it was then?
That's right. So you, you could spend money and lose that money, like it wouldn't be valuable at all.
But you lose the $30,000 or so because that, that study is going to tell you whether it would work.
That's right. I have looked at this one briefly after you unspoke. It is feasible. I mean, unless we're just missing something from the aerial imagery of houses, it is feasible from what I see now. I'm not saying it's a death, but it's feasible.
That aerial imagery of houses that would be in that danger zone, or most of those houses, do you think they're contained inside the Melody Lake subdivision? Or do you think some of those houses would go beyond that property of, you know?
It's a quick improvement. Most of them are surrounded by Ski Lake.
Okay.
There are a couple downstream of Ski Lake. If Ski Lake were a breach, they would be inundated. But if you could keep the breach within, contained within Ski Lake, there's potential there.
If there are any other questions?
One, considering dropping the level of the lake, of course, made, for want of a better word, landlocked some previous lakefront owners. Is there any indication that that might happen? And I say that specifically because that's the downside of it. If you could drop it to a two, it would be fantastic. But drop it to a two, and then that means you drop the lot down, the lake size down. Then the homeowners that are balling around that lot have the, some assuming that that lake is going to be there. They have some complaints and it could cost them, we're looking at damages against the county for the impact. So it kind of, it's a little bit of damage to do, damage to help.
There's two potentially, I would assume, affect their property values. If now they're not on a waterfront, so to speak, house further out, it might affect if they try to resell the house too.
The one that's affected the most, this is, this is a picture of Melody, of the lake itself. This little finger right here is the shot on that one end. So the house around that one, that would affect it the most.
Do we know whose house that is?
And that's not to say you're going to have any, any action. You know, the homeowner is very willing, you know, people more than willing to, you know, get some type of release to get the overall problem solved.
Can I talk a little bit about the schedule? So George St. Dam, we talked about the last meeting, George St. Dam, they began to send letters out. So the first, the first letter you will get, which we haven't gotten yet, is a non-compliance letter. It says you have X number of days to provide a schedule. Now, I've been keeping them up to date so far in the process. They know what's going on. They knew we had a meeting tonight to potentially make some decisions to move forward. So the first letter you'll get will be a non-compliance. Then you do a timeframe, usually it's 30 days, to give them a schedule. Like when will you submit the package to us? And then, and then if you do nothing after that letter, the next letter you get will be a notice of violation. And the notice of violation will give you a timeframe as well, and it'll say you have X number of days to get us something. The next letter you get will be a consent order, which will have fines assessed. So that's kind of, that's what you're looking at.
What are the typical fines?
They claim up to $1,500 a day. Now, that's EPD, they, I mean And that's to get them the schedule. The schedule would stretch out, it's reasonable, but what they consider reasonable with the design time, construction time, it's not asking for immediate action, it's asking for immediate plan. So that's what they're requesting is these letters that are coming in.
How many days will each one of these letters, you know, before you get the next letter, how many days is in between?
Just, I mean, they, they've waited. I've got seven or eight clients, maybe 10 now, that have gotten recent letters of non-compliance. And so now they have to provide a schedule, but they drug off. We've got one client that's got a, like they said, so it's just, it varies. I mean, if St. Dam knows that they're working like they have on this process here, they'll be a little more lenient. But at some point, they're going to say enough's enough.
So after that, continue your discussion about what happens next.
So that's, that's your letters of state, so that gives you, if
So the fines are cumulative?
The fines, the fines come in the end, and it'll, it'll continue until, I mean, by that point, it's, it's forward to the state in general. So I don't, I mean, whatever action they need to take. If it's bad enough, they threatened, they have threatened before they couldn't breach the dam themselves and then charge the owner with the cost. I'm not saying that will happen. I've only seen that happen one time. So really what needs, what I would say, the, the next step where you got, you got the options, alternatives, unless you decide to do the study. And then, but we have to give them a definite deadline. If you decide, hey, the study is what we want to do, the deadline will be X, but that study will be completed. If it doesn't work, here's the option, take it.
How long would it take to do that step?
I would probably recommend three, four months. That, that would give time. Survey guys are behind schedule because of the rain right now. You give them a couple of months to get survey, and then a month or two to get the study completed, analysis completed. So I would say to be safe, I would say three, four months.
And that study will tell us how low the water pool would be drawn?
Yes. It would tell you exactly what level the dam and the pool would be lower to be category two. To be lower than category two. And category two just means there's no loss of life if it were a breach.
Is it a, is it a annual or some sort of periodic inspection on a category two dam?
Yes. So after, that is, that's a very good point from a, you can relieve, you can remove it from a category one to category two. But it's really up to the local municipality to make sure nobody builds in that breach zone. So a breach zone will be identified, just like a flood plain will be identified. And then it needs to be either recorded or, you know, used whenever somebody comes in for building permit to stay out of the breach zone. But they, they do come back and inspect. Usually every five years, there'll be an inspection to say it's still a category two. So every, every dam is safe, gets inspected like that.
If the dam was lowered, would the road be usable?
Yes. Yes. It'd be kind of like option five.
Be up a slope?
It'd just be sloped down and come back up. I don't know what level, we don't know yet, but it's going to be usable. The houses will still have access. There will still be a method there.
Still there to take a bus over?
Still going to take a bus.
And I know that's a concern. If you kind of get through it.
Yeah, if, if
Our church drops it in.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not talking about, you know, stick it. Utilities that are crossing in the current, but also have to be relocated. I think there's a little line, potential that goes across it, some utilities.
Yes, sir, I see you with your hand up, but I don't believe anybody stood up and prayed if I'm wrong. And this is not coming carrying, so I'm sorry.
We've also discussed potential funding. I know you've mentioned breaking this up into two fiscal year budgets, but GFA, I said, we would fund it for a loan. You've donated a short-term loan. It could be stretched out 20 years or as short as five years paid off before those terms. But also a GMA application, we're working on submitting, that would give potential for some grant money.
I was going to ask Randy if he could, if you could just give us a little more detail on possible funding.
In your general package, Missures, we did identify three different funding sources for this project. Number one is cash to the budget. And currently, the, the current budget has $425,000 contained in it. $75,000 for consulting and $350,000 for actual construction. Again, the fiscal year is almost, it is half over, and we are preparing next budget year pretty soon. And any additional funding can be stretched into the next fiscal year. Or it could even stretch into the next fiscal year if we are, if the board wants to do that. So cash through the budget process, i.e. property taxpayers' money through the general fund. Or a low-interest, long-term GFA loan. The county constantly uses GFA loan money. That's a state loan program. It's a low-interest and long-term or short-term GFA loan. We have used those kind of loans for our water projects. It's a very common loan, very common debt instrument for counties and cities in Georgia. One is also available. Or Matt Smith has found that GFA, the Georgia Emergency Management Agency, has a, a competitive grant program out. The deadline is March 1st, and that's a 75-25 percent, where the state would pay 25, or the federal government passing through the state, perhaps, would pay the 75, and the county would be on the hook for 25 percent. Again, the GFA deadline is March 1st. That is a very long process. You would apply for the loan, like for the grant, it's a grant, not a loan, it's a grant. You apply for the grant, and it could take a year or more to have the state respond to see if the county did receive it or not. You know, is the state EPD and DNR, are they going to wait for us while we're waiting for the GFA grant? You know, I don't know. But those are the three funding mechanisms that we have identified for this project. We looked at special taxing districts, and that's not a, we don't think that's a legal use of special tax districts to improve dams. So these are the three, three mechanisms. Again, I would recommend, whatever the board decides, let's go for the GFA loan, the GFA, the GFA grant application. See if it works. If it works, that's, that's us to the good. If it doesn't work- If it doesn't work, then we're either go back with cash through the budget process, or maybe a low-interest GFA loan.
I don't know anything about Two Rivers. I know you're not yet.
You've got one lake out there.
Oh, no, 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 the Two Rivers Organization. But it's come to my attention that is there a possibility that they would have funds that we could tap into? I don't know, because I don't know about the organization.
I talked to Commissioner of the Department of Revenue this week to ask her if there were any little known about funds anywhere that maybe we just haven't picked up on. She knew about the GMA grant course, and she said she would ask throughout her department, and she would call me back today, and I didn't even call, so I think the answer to that is no, that we pretty much looked at all the sources. You know, when the county took over these roads, it was a very benevolent thing to do because school buses were having difficulty getting into other lakes, garbage trucks couldn't get in there, and it was a private subdivision, county didn't have to do that. But in order to help a large number of citizens, the commission at that time, without foreseeing any of what we're dealing with today, took over those roads. So that then became our problem. I've ridden out there in those lakes, I've driven around the lakes, I've looked at that lake, I've looked at the homes around that lake, and I tried to put myself in the place of those residents who live around that lake, and I certainly put myself in the place of other citizens throughout the county who are gonna have to pay for whatever improvements we do there. And as I looked at these options, you know, I find myself not willing to support removing the pool because of property values, because of their hopes and dreams are sitting in front of them, and you ride through and you see their docks, and their paddle boats, and their fishing lines, and their things, you know, their quality of life is tied to that, around that lake. And I think about, you know, okay, here comes government in to fix this and ruin that, or greatly decrease that, I'm not, I just can't support that. And yet I certainly can't support a million-dollar option, or a two-million-dollar option, which is part of what's on here. So I just went option by option, and looking at what I thought we, as a county, could afford for those residents, and that would put the least amount of burden on the full citizen rate. And my support is for option three, which raises the dam two and a half feet and lowers the pool by one foot. Now, right now, the lake is full because of all the rain we've had, but I'm sure in times of drought, which we've had plenty of in the last decade, that lake was probably lowered just by natural causes a foot or maybe two, I don't know, some residents here might see that. And then I'm also concerned that that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is an estimate, and that estimate's about a year old, so it may not be six hundred and fifty thousand. If you had to give us this estimate today, maybe seven fifty or eighty thousand. But that would be the option that I could support, lower the lake by a foot, raise the dam two and a half feet, and I would also like for us to consider spreading that over three fiscal years. And I've thought about the process of design and construction, and it seems to me like we would probably be in the fall of two years from now, so it might easily stretch over three fiscal years, the current one, then construction, and then the final coming in and neatening, you know, planning and all of that in that third fiscal year. So that would be the option that I could, in good faith, looking at taxpayer dollars in what was a private subdivision, but is no longer because we have the roads in there, supporting that option number three.
Would you be willing to entertain the idea of looking at another survey in option three, it lowers the level of the lake one foot? If, if we spend thirty thousand dollars on a survey, and say that survey comes back and we only have to, I mean, and we might have to lower it a lot more than one foot, but just say we have to lower it one foot, and then based off of an estimated construction with that survey, we'd be looking at two hundred thousand dollars versus six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I just can't imagine, and I know that you're here, that doing what you said, you lowered it only one foot, now you really, you tell me...
I think it'd be more than a foot, I mean, I do think it's probably five or six.
And that's five or six per acre? Do we have, based off of your topo, do you know how much that would shrink the...
Probably, I haven't, I don't have actually captured it out, but it's, you're probably looking at a five, six acre reduction. It's covered at sixteen acres, so yeah, that's a good one.
If it shrinks down one foot, how much, how many acres is that?
Very, very little. Yeah.
So...
This area, if this area is here, nobody's talked this thing out since right, right up here.
Yeah, well, I'll say, if you, if you lowered it, and then we went in there and excavated it out and made it a little deeper, water could get in there, and then they could probably go back to somewhat normal?
Yeah, that's right.
Just like a little, half an acre overall, sort of direction.
Yeah. Because I'll go in a foot, yeah.
Based off of your scale here, but five feet, what's that distance roughly?
This is here, you're probably four, four dollars?
Not a lot. So they're not, they're gaining a lot more land before their lake, on the majority where the homes are?
Yeah, they're not noticing difference, right?
So they, you have to notice the difference.
If you lower it a foot, it'll be very, very low, most of the lives are probably there.
But if you lower it five feet...
It will be a nice difference up here. Over here, you still, you'll notice maybe ten feet or fifteen feet.
And this area is where the majority of the homes are?
You see the homes?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got this, this home, this home here, I'm not sure about this one, and this one could be impacted here.
So these two rooms would be impacted more so than the majority, I suppose?
Everybody else has got these two slums.
About how deep is that, that slough that goes up to the, on the top?
That one there is three to four feet from here out. So here, here area, I mean, these are one of the contours, so I can make a deal on that, but from here back, you're four feet to here.
Is it fed by the stream, or is that just water back, back to where we're here?
It's fed by the spring.
Does that answer your questions?
That's your question.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrews has a really good point. This has been a difficult, and will be a difficult decision, and I have said from the beginning that, just as she said, this is your home, and we are having to make a decision that affects you and your home. And on the other hand, we also have to weigh the cost on the entire county and the taxpayer. So it's really, you know, I wish we, I wish we had the dollars that we, we could keep everything the same and fair and down, but there is a decision that we have to make, and time is running out.
Let me ask this question. To talk about the grant, Randy, do we know how much? At this time, we wouldn't know how much money that grant is, so...
No.
They would, you know, like, if we're going with option three, which is six hundred and fifty thousand, which it could be a little more or less, but we don't know if the grant's a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, or it could be the whole thing, we still may have to...
It's seventy-five percent is what?
Of that?
Of the amount that you apply for. It's kind of gonna be responsible for seventy-five percent, but it's competitive, and this is not a typical application for the GMA grant generators, a more typical backup emergency power, but they did say that they have a project in place right now, that they are using this money for a similar category one dam upgrade. So it's not, it's not intended for maintenance issues, but for upgrades like what we're having to do here, they think it's a possibility and it's worth applying for, but there's no guarantees to it. But if you do get it, it's a seventy-five percent grant.
Now, I know the grant application is due March first.
Yes.
When would the next round be?
It's based off of hurricanes, so this is based off of Hurricane Michael. The last one was off Hurricane Irma, so this...
So this is a one-time shot, isn't it? This is a one-time event?
This funding source is based off of Michael, so there's not a recurring round of money that's available.
This is the funds that you made reference to once before?
Yes, yes. And basically, it was in the discussion stages for several months, and now they actually have the grant application, there's a deadline, there's a website to go to, so now it's more formal, and now there's deadlines. Again, if option three was chosen, we would submit a grant for that option with that amount of money, and all of the engineering particulars that the, that Matt Smith and Brian Kimsey can help write and prepare, we submitted March first, but again, like I said, it might take a year just to get a, just to get a response, and we might not get it.
You would probably, you would need to be prepared to move forward with the design to satisfy EPD in that, that time.
During that time period.
Waiting on the grant.
So they still have to go use taxpayer money and budget to start the process in hopes of getting the grant, or may still have to go apply for that loan?
That's right, that's right.
Because I'm, I'm with, I'm with Andrews, I, if I had my house on a lake and my dog was out there, I really wouldn't want the pool to be dropping that far, I, I get that, because, you know, I don't see how, you know, that's also taking away some of their, like you said, their livelihood, but I'm in that quandary of, you know, kind of like what, kind of like what our attorney said, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't.
And it's damned.
Right. But I think we'd be remiss if we don't try to, I know we gotta make a decision on option, but I think we'd be remiss if we don't try to, for this grant, you know, lightning might strike us, we might get it, but either way, we've still gotta do something. And, and I had, you know, I hate the fact that here I am on my second meeting, and I'm having to make a decision that could affect the entire county, or and it could affect a certain neighborhood, when we've been dealing with this for, you know, eighteen months or so, so that, that lets you know how, what a struggle this has been.
Can I make a motion to take this until, for one more meeting, just to give us a little extra time to go, and that'll still give us until March first to work on grants, would that give us enough?
Yes, the next meeting is February the fifth. If a decision's made then, then we can whip up a application for this and turn it in before March first.
We're gonna have to proceed with the application, leaving the cost blank, the application's pretty detailed, we're gonna have to move forward if y'all, I think that's an option, we need to move forward with the application regardless. It's, it's not as quick and dirty as whipping it together.
Okay. That's an engineering term.
Yeah, Brown's already started on it, and I think there's still a lot to do, to meet that in March deadline.
Yeah, my question was, did you think you could make that?
Yes, sir.
If, okay, if, like, February, you might consider...
They'd have to start the...
You'll have to keep...
So they'd have to do the grant process and leave the monetary blank until we make a decision on the option at the next meeting.
Right, we can complete everything else except for which option you're going with and the cost associated with that.
Let me ask this question, from looking at this, this over the years, years that what the EPD is looking for is for us to have a plan, submit a plan, be it plan one or plan ten.
Yes, sir.
As opposed to not doing anything.
That's right.
And so that's what is important, is to develop a plan, and they see that we have a plan, and there may be some, some starts and stops in that plan, but at least there is a plan there, and that's what they're looking for, is that correct?
That's right.
I'd like to make that motion to take a decision until...
Okay, and take it to the next meeting, which is good with you.
Look with the motion and move for them to go ahead and...
To go ahead and see. To continue your application. Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'll say.
I mean, I know we tackled the decision, but your option, for them to move forward with that.
I'll say.
Okay. Right, I'll say.
I think like you done, and you said, I'll work out there for a, I don't want to cancel, but you just wrote it out.
Yes, yes. Every, every, for the application, for them to continue their application. Thank you, Randy, thank you. It seemed to strike me. The next item on the agenda is new business, is there any new business? New business? So Mr. County Manager, you're up.
Madam Chairman of Board Commissioners, number six, has an audit renewal agreement with our auditors, Robinson, Robinson Grimes and Company from Columbus. Robinson Grimes has been the county's auditors for about seventeen years. Their most recent, three-year agreement has expired, but the most recent audit that has been completed, they have submitted a letter of agreement contract with our audit services for the upcoming three fiscal years, the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one. You can see in their letter dated December twenty-seventh, they would do the audits for fifty-seven thousand in twenty nineteen, fifty-eight thousand in twenty twenty, and fifty-nine thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one. So staff recommends that we continue with the audit with Robinson Grimes and Company for the next three fiscal years. And Stephen Voynich, the auditor, is here to answer any questions the board may have.
Does anybody have any questions?
If I remember correctly, and maybe I don't, that those, those numbers are either the same as or just below what we finished, and I think part of that's due to the new, accounting system that we have that has made things a whole lot easier, so am I correct in that or not?
Basically, in the, in the previous years, we've had audit dollars, plus since before Clint, we had various finance directors, consultants, and Stephen and Robinson Grimes had to charge extra money to get the work done, because they kind of didn't have adequate staff in place. All that has been completely erased, so now we don't, we don't expect to pay any additional above these three amounts as we have in the past. Stephen, would that be a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, by having Clint in place and better procedures and better accounting practices, we are saving something a lot of money.
Now, if we do not go back and renew this with this company, what would that entail?
We could easily do an RFP, which is a request or proposal for a new auditing firm, that would be creating an RFP document, chunked full of financial information, banking records, it's, it's a huge effort, but it can be done, send it out on competitive bid, have companies respond, evaluate, interview the companies, and then select a company based on qualifications as well as cost. That is probably a four-month process from beginning to end, so if the board wants to do that, we would need to know now, because those four months would be February, March, April, and May, and the fiscal year ends June thirty, so we'd have to have a new auditing firm in place during the month of June, so they can jump on it right when the fiscal year ends on June thirty.
Could, if we did that, could the auditing company we have now also put in the competitive bid that we do on that, so it wouldn't exclude them?
Oh, no, not at all. Anybody can submit a bid, they would be evaluated for qualifications and other items. I've done this before many times, and the same auditor, you know, was the process and got it. So it, so yeah, it would not exclude them.
One thing we have to consider, though, is how many auditors...
One thing we have to consider, though, is how many auditing firms there are in this region that are large enough to do this kind of work. And there, you know, there may be some others. Robinson Grimes is one of the largest brands. So you're gonna get R F Ps from Atlanta and from, you know, other firms that are not locally firms, which is fine if you wanna go that way.
The last time we did switch, several years ago, it was to a firm in Atlanta, and we weren't pleased with it, and then we went back out and did a proposal with Robinson Grimes.
I would like to make one comment, particularly for our two new commissioners, because they didn't live through our years where we were really sweating blood. Unfortunately, Harris County was in a position, was put in a position where we were behind in our audits, and if we get behind in our audits, the state, our audit has to be submitted to the state. We get behind, the state has the right to completely stop and withdraw any support of funds from a number of different categories that would have played into, that would have come to the county. When Randy came on board, that was probably our number one priority, was to get off of that list so that we would not lose those funds. Robinson Grimes, who were at that point kind of our outside auditors, we begged really to get them to come in, and they within six months had finished the first year that we were behind. We were behind three years. Finished the first year, and we had a plan and a program where we said, all right, get that done, and we can finish the other two by the end of the year, the next year. So it would have been an eighteen-month period. With that, Randy was able to get the state instead of taking away some of those funds, and then eventually was in the million, million-two range. Instead of taking them away, they would hold them, withhold them, and if we met that last deadline getting the money, then they would release the funds to us. We made that deadline by the skin of our teeth, but Robinson Grimes put the people up here, plus we had to go to an outside firm too to bring in a couple of folks that could just work with us day after day after day, but we got it done, and they really made themselves available, in my opinion, kind of earned a real big outlay for what that does. We are currently at this time, current, we are current, and we actually didn't wait till the last minute this year. We were through a couple of weeks ahead of time as far as getting it done, so, yeah.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the letter of agreement contract with Robinson Grimes for their audit services for nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. The prices that they used to...
I will second that motion.
I have a question in the discussion. I know you said for three years, is there a way you could do it for one year, or do we have to do three?
It could be done in one year, or two years, or four years.
I'm just, you know, just asking, because I know at the, I believe it was in the meeting in December, you know, that issue with the audit, and they ended up having the issue with other constitutional officers. Now, I don't wanna make, I wanna make sure that we don't have that kind of issue coming going forward. You know, I don't want any bad blood or anything by any, either side. You know, I just wanna make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do here. But it could be one or three.
Yes. Stephen, is that what you... If it was a one-year for the fifty-seven thousand in twenty nineteen, accept that?
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to address that issue by not, the information that auditors got from the third party was the incorrect information. Auditors don't have an obligation to go to a department chair and saying, hey, you're about to get a finding. They put it in the audit, and you receive it. So they put in the audit what they received. It really wasn't the fault of the auditor. Now, was it professional courtesy for them to go to a department chair? Yes, that would have been professional courtesy, but there's no obligation, and it's not in the contract, it's not part of my dealings with auditors, it just, I got a finding when I got a finding, and there it was. Now, it was an error, but it was an error of third party, not necessarily the error of the auditor.
I can tell you, I've had two conversations with two separate people with the bank, and they apologize profusely for me.
Oh, I wasn't blaming.
Yeah, I'm just, I was just saying, what in an auditor's area?
Yeah, no, I was just saying that I know that that was a...
Was it professional courtesy perhaps?
No, I'm just saying, I know that was a contention.
Yeah, that's right.
And I wasn't blaming the auditor, I wouldn't say that, I'm just saying that he had a contention, so I would hope going forward that we don't have that, and I agree, it may not be an obligation, but in a county like we are, if we're not all together pulling in the same direction, it's bad, because we are a big county, but we're one big community. So I agree with you, a professional courtesy probably could have solved any of that anyway.
But I just want to see what they're required.
Right, yeah, I get it.
Something that they...
They didn't do anything wrong.
That's right.
Okay, so there is a motion, and a second. So, all in five. Okay, motion passed.
Was that one or three years?
Three years.
I think it was three.
My motion was for three years. Okay, Randy, next.
Number seven, Madam Chairman, Board Commissioners, this is a recreational trails program grant mitigation proposal. If the board will remember, the county was a road and was awarded a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the recreational trails program grant, which is a federal grant given to the state for the Rails to Trails project. As part of that grant program, the state says we need to mitigate some damage to the historic structure of that old railroad. So we discussed with the state at Leach, our consultants discussed with the state at Leach, the State Historic Preservation Office in particular, and we tried to get out of this adverse finding. The state wouldn't allow us to get out, so they said to move forward to receive the grant, we have to do some activities that would mitigate the historic adverse impact of the actual rail bed. So after talking to the state, Matt Smith of Carter Sloot and Dean Wood of Southern Research out of Catala or Ellersley, we've hired them to shepherd this process through the State Historic Preservation Office so we can get through this project and on with the real project of the Rails to Trails. So after speaking with the state, Southern Research has given us a proposal to get us through this process and have the state release the funds to the county so this project can That project is sixteen thousand, one hundred and five dollars to do various activities and submit to the state. Matt Smith and Dean Wood is here to answer any additional questions the board may have.
What exactly are they saying is the historical part of the, because I know there are other counties that have done, you know, similar situations, Rails to Trails, were they in the same boat? How is our railroad more historical than others, other than maybe the bridge up there at Catala?
We're not even at the bridge right now. This isn't just the trail, but it's a, you're not gonna like the answer, but the answer's changed. Phase one, the D O T funded, it starts in Pine Mountain, passed through with no hiccups. Phase two, because it was working on the same environmental, which was funded with land and water conservation funds, no hiccups. Phase three, and then you correct if I'm wrong, they've changed the way they look at the impact of paving the old rail bed, and now anything we do, to put an asphalt surface on it, which is the function of a Rails to Trails program, is now considered an adverse effect, and it's gonna be considered an adverse effect going forward, as best is what they're telling us right now.
Great. I was actually astonished with the decision of the state, and very irritated with them. I've worked with them on almost a daily basis. And as Matt said, for reasons that I do not understand, they have decided that adding forages of asphalt, changing it from a railroad, historic railroad bed to a walking trail is an adverse effect. We've tried pretty darn hard to get them to change their minds, and they did. But that doesn't, in the project, what they want to do really is to have the historic railroad bed and the history of the community interpretive for the public, those who will use the trail, the visitors to the area. That's not unreasonable. I was a bit surprised. And it does affect going on for these other segments of the trail as we go down, they're probably doing the same thing. Our first approach was to go to them and say, okay, we'll do one interpretive panel that we can put on the trail, that tells the visitors where, what's going on here, what is this railroad? Came in eighteen eighty-two, why Chipley is here, why Pine Mountain's here. And they said, well, that's great, but we don't want just one. So we said, okay, two. And that's where we are right now. The panels will be very professionally done. I think it will be a contribution to the community and the folks, your visitors here and residents who probably don't know much about the railroad. And that will suffice. To get to that point of getting the grant, we have to do a memorandum agreement, which basically the county enters an agreement with Historic Preservation Office and D N R, the grant funding organization, to lay out the stipulation, which basically says, first of all, Matt had to come up with, can you avoid impacting the trail? Of course, the answer is, well, no, the trail has to go on the railroad, period. That was an obvious one. So they conceded that. The next step is to develop an M O A and stipulation, we'll do two panels, they'll be twenty-three inches, not forty inches, and be professionally designed and have content that the community approves of, and I think that would be pretty much it. And then for construction, we'll take some of your engineered drawings, we'll take some light, light art imagery we have of the area and record it. This railroad bed is not being destroyed or seriously impacted, it's just the opinion of the state now. And to answer your question, all Rails to Trails from now on are gonna be going through the same environments, to make it pretty clear to us. So now we know the next segments will have to be prepared for.
And are they considering these railroad beds historical because the train is basically going, we're being done away with? I mean, I, you know, I mean, I've never grown up here, you know, you couldn't go anywhere, there's trains everywhere, now we have none. I'm assuming that's...
Well, it's a look at the historic resources within the state, and they just completed, unfortunately completed it just after we had gone to them and tried to convince them otherwise. It's called Historic Context for all railroads in the state of Georgia. So they have tremendous amount of information on all the historic railroads, and that information then guides whether you have an adverse effect. The railroad itself is eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. My argument to the state was, well, that's true, but the essence of the railroad has been removed. The ties are gone, signals are gone, everything's gone except the boughs, which is the gravel there, the road bed. Other instances we've seen, there would be no adverse effect. In fact, the phase one, no adverse effect at all, but it didn't go for these same people. We have a different group of folks who have different attitudes about it. But it is eligible property. I will never agree that there's an adverse effect by making Rails to Trails, but that opinion counts for a little bit.
Where would the panels go?
I do not know. That's up to you all. There are opportunities, you can put them on the trail, for instance, with the trailhead.
These would be historical markers.
No, they won't be markers, they will be half-inch thick. Basically, they are, they can be freestanding, you can put them on a wall, you can mount them on signs, the opportunity, they can be indoors or outdoors, we don't wanna limit our options. And they will be, again, twenty-three inches wide and about forty inches long. The content will be lots of photographs, historic photographs that we can come up with, and a narrative about the history of the community and how it relates to the railroad itself. Hopefully some information about who actually built that railroad. Mr. Chipley didn't really build it himself, he had finance, so we'd like to know who built this. And where they are mounted is up to you guys, I guess, and the rest of us. The state will not have input into where exactly you put them. Some opportunities are put them at trailheads, the library potentially, Chipley Historical Society, I think there would be plenty of opportunities for them to be highly visible and contribute to the understanding of our history of this community.
If they're put outside, how long will they last?
These, the company we go to will guarantee them for ten years. They're the best. I've seen other examples, we're right now involved with Columbus on Riverwalk, redeveloping all of their interpretive panels, and we work with only very best company. I don't want anything that we do to look like heck.
Well, there's nothing worse than to go up to a marker, it's fading, you can't see the thing yet.
It's terrible, and this company's called Fossil Industries, they are the supplier for interpretive panels for almost all the museums in the country, and they do wonderful stuff.
What's the cost, about the cost for a, for a panel?
The cost, actually, for fabricating the panels, we, our company will develop all the content, working with Randy and the community to develop the content that we wanna tell our story. Then, once we have that content together, I send it off to a colleague of mine who's a graphic designer, and he will design that beautiful format, and then when he gets that to the way we all like it, that the electronic file actually goes up to Long Island, York, they will fabricate them and send them to us. If they're damaged or something, they will have the files and we can get them again. Individual panels cost five thousand dollars each for fabrication, and that double that for the design, and then there's my resorbant fee to write up the history of our county to you. But the panels themselves are pretty inexpensive, and the good thing about it is they have a great guarantee, and if something catastrophic happens, they can be replaced quickly, they have the same file.
That sign after ten years, is it something easy enough to resurface it, or are you looking at buying new panels and getting, starting over completely?
The ones I have seen last a lot longer than five years, ten years.
They're warranted for ten years.
They're warranted for ten years, and we've worked with these folks for years, and all of my colleagues do, they're the, they're the go-to, they've got the secret formula. And in ten years, you might want to redo things, but history is always rewritten. I tease about that, rewrite history, but that's what I do, is to rewrite history. Things will change, there'll be more information, I have different stories. Some of these interpretive exhibits kind of get stale after a while, things, look at them, they go, wow, that's...
So it's not that they care where these go, they just care that we have them.
Correct.
They want us to mitigate the adverse effect, and that was the easiest, less, least expensive option for mitigation that they accepted.
If, or an archaeological site, for instance, when the curve was taken out of the highway down by the Wild Fields, we did all the archaeological excavations for that project. Mitigation there is, you dig the archaeological site, you learn from it, you publish your results, and you put it through the stuff and so forth. We're not gonna excavate, archaeologically excavate the railroad bed, I hope, preserving it. Well, we are, now, that was our argument, and I am frustrated, this is a wonderful way to preserve the railroad bed. And they agreed, but they're gonna hold to it because they have made other communities with Rails to Trails do the same thing, and we're not gonna drop the hook.
Well, I'll be honest with you, as a history teacher and someone that goes everywhere to any kind of history exhibit, my kids hated, hated it when they were young, and that's where our vacations went. You know, I think the interpretive panels, you know, why don't you wanna go somewhere if you don't wanna learn about why that place is there? So, I mean, I don't understand why they're doing this with the Rails to Trail, but I do like the idea of us having the panels, whether they were making us or not. You know, we need to know our history.
You want to have anything else?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. All in five. Okay, motion carries.
Madam Chairman, Board Commissioners, number eight, has an agreement or a task order in particular with Pond Consulting, the airport's consultant, for airport fencing design phase two. This is task order number nine. Basically, last year, we installed a fence on the airport, so we only got halfway around due to funding issues, so now we're ready to go to phase two and fence any balance of the airport in order to protect the airport from wildlife and strikes on the runway and airplanes. So basically, our consultants have secured funding from G dot, and this is in the approved budget. All the costs are partially reimbursable by the F I A and the state. The task order on this one is sixty thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars, and that is for design and construction administration of the fencing project phase two. It consists of eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty linear feet of fencing. This county, the county's portion is four thousand, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, four thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars of the sixty thousand, four forty-nine. And once all the documents are prepared, it'll be bid out through a competitive bid process and awarded to the most responsive bidder. And once all the documents are prepared, it'll be bid out through a competitive bidding process and awarded to the most responsive bidder. The actual construction project is about seven hundred thousand dollars. And the county's portion is estimated to be a hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. And the entire project should be approved, should be completed by late June twenty nineteen, which is the end of the fiscal year. And you can see on the attached map, the yellow line are phase two of the project. Christine Schultz with Pond Consulting is here to go over the task order number nine and answer any questions the board may have.
How many incidents have we had of wildlife being hit by a plane? I'm just curious. Are we doing this because we're trying to prevent it, or are we doing this because we've kind of been told we need to do it because it's something we need to do to like be a preventative measure?
So, in the past few months, there has been at least one deer strike. I'm not out there every day. Bill might be able to speak to that a little bit more, but it's not uncommon.
Right.
And deer scat has been found around the runway, so we know they are around.
In his county?
Yes.
Anyone have any other questions?
So, it is required by the FAA to do this, is that...?
It's not required by the FAA, but at this point where we have only the really smart deer, we're going to find, figure out where the gates are, where they can trap them, and partial fence.
There have been instances in the past of two-footed critters going out there at night, racing up and down the runways, doing wheelies and whatnot, and doing some damage that way too.
Correct. It's a double purpose, security and...
Will this fence affect us having the fly-in or anything in back? So we're going to have a fence basically to stop all the young men who like to go out there and drag race up and down on it and stop all the critters, but it's not really going to be an adverse effect on us having our plane or anything like that?
No, the portion of the fence that's going to be constructed or to finish it, you're actually not going to be able to see. It's going to be further out in the wood, except it won't affect the violence, it won't affect the...
Anyone else? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll say it.
You say it. Okay. All in favor? Motion carries.
Madam Chairman, Work Commissioners, item number nine, again, this is a similar kind of project. It's more of a maintenance project. It's airport runway remarking and crack seal. To design this project, bid it out, and construction administration of this project, all by June thirty. It is task order number ten. Basically, the FAA has come down and doing various inspections that said our runway markings are faded and they need to be replaced. We didn't clean them last year, but that was a temporary stopgap measure. So, to replace the runway markings on the runway and do some crack seal as a maintenance operation, Pond has said they would do the project for fifty-three thousand five forty-five, which is the design and construction administration. The county's portion will be four thousand six hundred nineteen dollars. Now, once the project has been designed, it'll be bid out, then the low bid will get it. And then the actual construction is estimated to be about a hundred thousand dollars. And the county's proportion is estimated to be about twenty-five thousand. And again, both these projects have been included in the approved budget. And so Christine will be here to answer any questions the board may have on this runway remarking and crack seal maintenance project.
When was the last time we had it? I know we cleaned it last year. How long has it been since the last time we painted or remarked it, I guess?
A long time.
Ten years?
Ten years?
Ten years.
About ten years.
And this is coming from the FAA. They said that if the markings were not redone, we have to close the airport.
So basically, about every ten years, we probably need to remark it, I would kind of assume.
Or clean it and maintain it.
Right.
Take all that crap.
On the crack seal, I'm assuming we're just going to go in and put stuff into the cracks. How long do we think it's going to be before we have to redo the whole thing?
And that's in our five-year master plan.
To completely resurface it?
Yes.
Yes. Like, have five years' time to resurface it all?
Because that is a very expensive project.
Yes.
So basically, this would be a stopgap to get us to that five-year point. But during that five-year point, we're going to have to repaint it again when we resurface it, right? Because if you resurface it, you'll have to repaint it. So, basically, this will last us five years, and then we'll have, so basically, about another fifteen, that'd be fifteen, I guess, because you do it five more years roughly. Does that make sense? It's been a long day. My mind is up here. But roughly, this is going to do us for five. If we have to resurface everything in five years, we'll have to resurface and repaint or remark. And then that probably hopefully will give us another ten, is what I'm saying. Maybe longer on the resurfacing, on the remarking.
Okay, any other questions with Christine? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, Work Commissioners, item number ten, project updates. To hit the hot points, again, the fiscal year is a little bit over halfway over, and all of these programs and work items are getting completed, little by little. Hitting the hot points, number three, commercial fitness equipment for the community center. That should be here next week in mid-January, a new treadmill, a new recumbent bike, medicine balls, dumbbell set, bench, and a cushion flooring. That should be here in the next week. And these are additional items, not replacements. Number seven, the replacement jaws and live tools for EMS. We're preparing biz specifications. It will go out next week. Item number eleven, water heaters for the prison in progress completion during late February. And those are two very, very, very large water heaters, very large. Number twelve, replacement locking system and intercom system for the prison that is ongoing. The pre-construction meeting was held on January the ninth, and that is ongoing. It should be finished by late March. Number sixteen, backup generator for the nine-one-one center. We are preparing GMA grant applications to request funding instead of paying it through our budget process of thirty thousand. We're preparing grant funding to GMA to have them give us a backup generator for the nine-one-one center.
Is that in competition to our Melli Lakes grant?
It is not in competition. It is in partnership with. So, I think there's like two different kind of grants, one's for small projects, one's for like big projects. So they're not in competition. It's two different sectors.
Are they both coming out of the hurricane?
Yes, the hurricane and Michael funds. Yes. So, we're going to get, try to get grant funding, again, this is highly competitive, grant funding from GMA, grant funding to replace the backup generator for the nine-one-one center. Number nineteen, resurface four and a half miles of Lower Blue Springs Road and three point seven miles of Barnesville Road using the county's twenty nineteen allocation of LMEN. Again, completion is expected in the later than May twenty nineteen. That was already on bid, bid opening, and now we're waiting for Goodweather to repave those two roads. Again, expecting completion during May twenty nineteen. Number twenty-two, restrap various county roads for safety. That's on bid, bid opening is January the seventeenth. It'll be on the boards of general consideration on February the fifth. Barnesville Road, number twenty-three, we did receive approval from the city attorney, the county attorney, and the ACCG attorney approving language for the sign. We have ordered those, and we're going to put those signs up on the bridge as they come in.
On both sides?
On both sides. And we'll be working with City Hamilton on placements. Number twenty-six, Ellison Park. Again, with all the inclement weather we've been having, that project has been delayed. I'm expecting completion of the road and playground in late January, opening sometime in late February, and have the grand opening ceremony sometime in March. So far, it's so good on that project.
How long do you do it on the playground?
It has been delivered. And the installers will be here the week of January twenty-eighth. It should be about a two or three-day install. Because they went to other places to install other playgrounds. So they should be here the week of January twenty-eighth to install. Number twenty-nine was discussed and approved tonight. That is phase two of the airport fencing project. Number thirty-one was also discussed. Number thirty-one is the airport access road. Again, that was delayed due to inclement weather, but that is on tap to pave hopefully next three weeks as weather permits. So that, the airport access road should be finished paving probably by middle of February?
Say the end of February.
End of February?
Just in case rain.
Okay. So that project should be finished very soon. Number thirty-three was approved tonight, the airport runway remarking study, the airport runway and crack seal project. Number thirty-five, airport flying except for May the fourth, twenty nineteen. It is in the planning stages.
Have we had any luck on insurance for, I mean, I know that's hard to do, and I know you've been working on it.
Well, the good news is, we got good news and kind of strange news. Let us over there. We have found some pilots who are willing to help us. And we're still working on the details on insurance issues.
Do they have insurance?
Yes, they do. They all have insurance. The question is, do they want to share it?
Well, they don't have share for that one day.
Just maybe five hours.
Right, not even the whole day.
No, they haven't.
What's the strange news?
That is the strange news.
I teach school. That wasn't really strange.
So we have found willing partners to help us. We're just going to talk to them a little further about their insurance, about our insurance needs. Number forty-three, the conference of master plan, again, that was discussed tonight. And is the next meeting in February? The second meeting in February?
The next scheduled one is, depends on those little groups.
The whole committees, okay. So, number forty-five, Melli Lakes, again, that was discussed tonight. It's been tabled until February the fifth meeting, but the engineers are going to proceed with the GMA application. Number forty-six, roads to trails. Again, that was discussed tonight. In my estimation, we should bid out this project during July, award during August, and completion by December of this year. Because all three grant sources are lining up together pretty well. Number forty-eight, the site orders, that was, again, approved tonight. So number forty-eight has been completed. Number forty-nine, Desolous Stream Railroad Project. I was up there today overlooking the project, and due to inclement weather, that project has been delayed, but they should start on it real soon, once again. So that's about a, that project has been delayed about three months. I was up there today. I hadn't seen the activity from any, anybody. Number fifty-two, a sharing agreement along with a frequency agreement with divorce power. That should be on the February fifth commission meeting for consideration. And number fifty-three and fifty-four, the Northwest Harris Business Park, we are progressing with those two items, bidding out a third sign for the business park to replicate the existing two signs, and then clearing ground to thirty-five acres for a future prospect and makeup. So that's about the projects that are in their status. We did get some more, on page twelve is the single-family home building permits. In December, there were nine permits issued for single-family home building permits. So at the sixth month of the fiscal year, of the six months, a hundred and ten. So if we do another hundred and ten, the second six months, we will be at the same level as last year.
And for the county, a year was two fifteen.
Right. And you can see the solid percentage was a slot, a slot decrease. And it just seems in December, we had so much garbage, that the bill was for a little bit less. I just don't understand it. I don't understand. So that's the projects. Would you, I'll try to question the board may have.
I'm going to go back to number twenty, which is the Holland Drive. I believe that was, that project was managed.
Yes.
I should have something on the next, at the next meeting for replacement road. I finally was able to meet with the landowner yesterday. So...
Nancy and I have to work out, take a look at some details, and I hope to have something for you next meeting.
But not on Holland, but replacement?
On Holland, replacement.
Okay, understood.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Mr. County Attorney, do you have anything?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Thank you.
Is there any further executive session?
No, ma'am, I don't.
I do, I do have a question, and this may not be the right time to ask it, but...
There's never a wrong time.
Well, sitting here talking to him about the historical preservation and the flags and all that, got me thinking that every time, you know, you walk into the community center, there's not one. You know, every other building we have has a bronze flag that's winning with bills and who was the commissioners and all that. But I don't think there is one at the community center, and I was just wondering what happened, or if it wasn't supposed to have one. I mean, I, you know, I was just curious, because, you know, I go to the community center fairly good bit, and so it just, the flag's going to be thinking about it.
Is it just oversigned?
I think it probably was, because I think that was one discussed.
Oh.
I think it was just oversigned.
Yeah.
If the board wants one, we could have one for various calls.
I mean, I was, if that made me think about it, I just didn't see. I know we have a nice one at the library.
It's the like season, so they're going to see you tomorrow.
Right.
Any questions?
There's a board of one.
I think we do.
I think we should.
We should have.
And will it reflect the commissioners at that time?
I think it's supposed to.
It should. We'll do some research and get one, get one order.
Now, I hate that I brought this up. No, I don't hate that I brought this up. Company that built it, sometimes they furnish those. Could we contact them to see if they would do it even though they didn't do it the first time?
I know the architects.
I mean, I'm just saying, so...
The only thing they'll say is...
Well, I know nothing's free.
We'll make contact.
He will help us get one.
We can ask.
Thank you.
There you go. If we have a...
He'll certainly know because he's still going on one for the library now.
Right. Okay.
The same architect.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?